Mayor Lehman?
Here. Item number three, if you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, if you would let me.
Counselor, go ahead.
I'd like to invite everyone to join us in a moment of silence to honor Ashley Lehman, Mayor Lehman's daughter-in-law, beautiful young woman who was taken from this earth too soon. If you guys would please join me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Item number four, special presentation showing recognition of Show-Off Shakopee winners and their wonderful pictures. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Bill Reynolds. I'm the city administrator. I'm filling in for the award-winning Amanda Lilly, who is back behind recording this. Normally she would be doing this, so if I mess things up, please forgive me. The Communications Department hosts this Show-Off Shakopee photo contest each September, inviting community members to submit up to three photos taken in Shakopee sometime in the last two years. New categories are chosen each year, and cash prizes are awarded to the winners of each category, as well as a grand prize winner. This year, communications staff chose the finalists and posted the photos in each city building, giving city staff an opportunity to vote for the winners. With more than 110 votes cast, the winners are as follows. Uniquely Shakopee, which is a category. A very nice winter scene. And obviously, the Ren Fair. And the winner this year was Christopher Straub with his Chief Shakopee statue winner photograph. I don't believe Mr. Straub was able to be with us tonight. The next category, architecture finalists. We have the Roar Malting. We have Mr. Schlepper and the Cathedral. And then Craig, who has a great, one of the log cabins down on the landing. And the winner is Mr. Nye with also a, one of our churches in the area. Please, come on up. The winners of each category and the grand prize winner gets 100. Congratulations. We will have a photo with you in just a few minutes. We take photos, too.
Okay.
We'll take a photo in a minute, I guess.
Yeah.
All right. We'll get pins for you when we take your pictures, okay? So we'll have you come back up in a minute.
Good. All right.
Thank you.
Our next category is fun in the sun. Our finalists are another Ren Fair shot, also by Mr. Nye. Our new Jackson Commons Park. And the winner is Mr. Schlepper with a action photo, and not pickleball, but that appears to be actually tennis. Now, all the pickleball people are going to be back next year.
Next year, we'll have all sorts of...
Guaranteed. Golden hour finalists. That appears to be, oh, that's the Canterbury, help me, what's that called?
Walking track.
It's the, it's...
That's the, what is that?
Winter summer?
The paddock. Paddock. Thank you. Yes. And then we have another one of our award-winning parks. A nice foggy scene somewhere, probably same, that same park by the look at it, looking at it. And then finally, that's another one of our playgrounds that was recently produced.
Soon-to-be award-winning.
And the golden hour winner, obviously the golden hour would be Sunset. Kathleen Borca with a little hummingbird. Man, we were able to get that.
Sunrise.
What's that?
Sunrise.
Sunrise. Oh, that's sunrise. Either one. There you go. Shows you what I know. Budding photographer finalists. I have no idea where that is.
That's Beta Seed.
That's Beta Seed.
Ah, Beta Seed, yes. Well, of course, you would know. You were out over there. Awesome lake and cloud, and then some leaves against a blue background. And finally, the winner is Luciana Gilson with an incredible-looking nasty insect. Now, the grand prize winner, which is $100 check. Photographer Jane Veldy with an awesome fireworks display, probably in the Christmas season down by Uber Park. Now, if we can have all the winners come up and have a photo with council, and then Mayor Lehman will also present you with the City of Shakopee pin. Thank you all much for participating this year.
All right. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for participating this year. We really appreciate it. Great work. All right. Well, hopefully, we see some of you next year.
Thank you.
Keep snapping.
Okay, we are on item number five. Approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
A few from staff, sir, just to correct some of the errors. We will be removing 6E for an actual presentation. But 6A has an error. It should be a simple majority for the vote. And the same with 6M, also for salvaged equipment, and that will be a simple majority as well.
Okay, so 6E is going to come off the consent agenda.
Correct.
All right. Any other, okay. Okay, we're not to the consent, but we'll cover that when we get there. So approval of the agenda. Counselor Contreras?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Second?
Second by Counselor Whiting. Discussion on the motion. Discussion. Mr. Reynolds, we're approving the agenda, not the consent.
Oh.
Good test.
You're good.
Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed, and the agenda is adopted. Item number six is the consent agenda. Any changes to the consent? Staff removed item 6E. Any changes from council?
I'd like to move item 6J for quick discussion.
6J. Okay. Any other changes by council? Which is, Mr. Whiting?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Your second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Delaney. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Reynolds, would you like to read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for Tuesday, November 18th. 6A is a surplus property. 6B approves the feasibility report and calls for a public hearing for the 12th Avenue Improvement Project. 6C is the monthly financial report for October. 6D accepts a proposal from SEH, Proposal for Design and In-Construction Services for the 2026 Downtown ADA Lighting and Tree Rehabilitation Improvements. 6F is a change order for SRF for the West End AUAR Five-Year Update. 6G is a change order for the Miller-Dunwoody Architects. 6H is approval of the October 1st, 2025 City Council Minutes. And 6I is the approval of the November 5th City Council Minutes. 6K is a resolution approving documents in connection with the insurance, excuse me, with the issuance of revenue bonds of the City of Shakopee for the benefit of the St. Francis Regional Medical Center and ratifying Resolution Number R 2025 Tac 125. 6J is a change order for the Dog Park. And 6M is an additional information to squad that was salvaged and authorized for disposal proposal from the January 21st, 2025 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion on the motion from council? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven is public comment. If you're here for an item that is not on our agenda, now would be that time to step up to the table here. Love to hear your comments. So if you're here for something not on the agenda, we allocate five minutes for this, so if you want to start out whenever you'd like, name an address for the record, please.
Yeah, we're David and Jeannie Gavin at 613 Fourth Avenue East.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. We attended the city council meeting on April 1st of this year, and we presented our concerns about the AMI, or Advanced Metering, Smart Metering Infrastructure Implementation, and the policies that are put in place by the Shakopee Public Utilities, which is overseen by the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission. Our present situation is that we've been customers in good standing with Shakopee Public Utilities since June of 2014. And we're still trying to negotiate with the Shakopee Public Utility Authorities to reach a mutually agreeable solution that allows us to keep our fully functioning analog meters for our electric and water service. Shakopee Public Utilities continues to wrongfully assert that we are refusing to grant them access to their SPU-owned equipment. Per their current policy, we are now being charged steep non-compliance fees for the next three months, after which our electric and water services will be discontinued. In correction, we have openly stated from the beginning that we are not refusing access to their equipment, but merely ask for proof that the new meters do not cause harm. We have not been convinced by the information provided to date as it fails to acknowledge the current extensive body of research regarding harms caused by AMI technology. Therefore, we cannot accept the meters they have proposed to replace our existing, fully functioning analog meters. It is our understanding that you, our elected mayor and city council members, appointed the Public Utilities Commission to oversee Shakopee Public Utilities and therefore have some jurisdiction over how they operate within our community. Our impression from the April 1st City Council meeting that we attended, that during the discussion, we understood that we will be contacted with the council's findings after you investigated matters related to jurisdiction. We have not yet to receive an official response, and we are here today to request a written response explaining who has jurisdiction over how Shakopee Public Utilities and its commission operates within our community, including who owns the utility. The name itself implies it is a city-owned entity governed in part by the citizens of Shakopee and our elected governing officials. What governing entities are involved? What is each entity's authority to act regarding decisions of how utilities are metered at an individual citizen's home in the City of Shakopee? And what laws, either of Shakopee, Minnesota, and/or the United States, if any, require or demand the implementation and consumers' acceptance of AMI technology in order to be eligible for electric and water services to their home? We respectfully ask for your response no later than December 4th. This information is essential for us as we consider next steps in our ongoing negotiations with Shakopee Public Utility and to prevent pending disconnection of our essential electric and water services. We thank you in advance for your attention to this important matter. And just for simplicity for you, we've given a lot of detailed information. We did print out this letter that we just read, so if...
The clerk.
Yep. Like a copy of that. And we realize this time is limited, and we did discuss a lot of things on April 1st. You graciously gave us more than five minutes last time, so I don't think, you know, unless there's specific questions, we're happy to answer.
Yep.
But we don't...
Okay. Staff, do we have in possession the request for information that they're referring to?
I just received it, just now, with everybody else.
Okay. All right. Well, then we'll let staff respond. Mr. Whiting?
Has Shakopee Public Utilities gotten in touch with you with their recent opt-out program?
We were given an email. We haven't received the official letter by mail, so we're kind of waiting to get that by mail and just, you know, sit down and mull it over. Of course, since April 1st, we were hoping to have your input because that would have helped us sort of hone in a little bit, you know, I guess more targeted on how we approach the situation. We've tried to follow their policies as much as possible. From our initial review of what they sent us of this recent policy change, the meter that they are proposing is still a smart meter. It just doesn't have RF communication, but it still has the same problem, which much research is pointing to it's actually worse than the RF portion that's causing harm, but that is causing dirty electricity within the home, which I'm not going to go into the details, but there is a lot of scientific research of...
Thank you.
Certification questions? Anybody? No? All right. All right. Staff has your information, and they'll answer your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, it is a public comment period. If you're here for an item not on the agenda, now would be the time to come up and speak. We'd love to hear your comments. Anybody? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number eight is business removed from the consent agenda. 6E was removed by staff for a presentation. Mr. Kurski?
Mayor and council, this is the final plat of Arbor Bluff Third Edition. This is the site in question, so they've already built out a good portion of this development. This is the last portion to be constructed. They have already constructed the road, Wood Duck Trail that connects through an easement the City obtained with the Shakopee-Minnetawakan Sioux community. And you'll see later on pictures of a bridge that's yet to be installed that the developers currently working on that's in this red spot right here that goes over the waterway that runs through the property. CUS Homes Lnar has proposed a third phase of their Arbor Bluff subdivision located south of Valley View Road and west of Independence Drive. The applicant is proposing the development of their third and final phase of a single-family residential subdivision. This final plat creates 68 single-family lots with one outlot area. This final plan is consistent with the PUD and preliminary plat previously approved by the council. City and SPU staff support this request. So this is the final plat. We thought you'd like to see some pictures. I remember as part of the PUD here, there was a significant amount of trails and open space created, so they've already installed the trails and are finishing off some of the grading here. These are some back trails through the woods. They did preserve. They went through and cleared out a lot of the diseased trees in here, so they did preserve all these wooded areas. You can see the backyards of these homes here. And this is a natural woodchip trail that actually goes through the tree area. They just installed these woodchips within the last week. This is the other side of that woodchip trail through the trees. And this is where the bridge will be going, so they've already built the abutment, which will go across here and then land over here so that people will be able to walk through this area without interfering in the waterway. So actions to approve Resolution 2025-126 approving the final plat of Arbor Bluff Third Edition.
Mr. Whiting?
Recently, we did some work on, was it the Arbor Bluff Creek? Is that anywhere near this project, and how would that affect it, or would it?
Mayor and council, if I can pull this up, and the city engineer can chime in, but the creek runs through this area right here, and we did some improvements to that and basically cleaned up and made sure that that water would flow properly down through this area. Eventually, when the adjoining properties redevelop, that creek will go through. And if you remember from the AUAR plans, there'll be large holding ponds similar to that the SMSC has to prevent any future flooding of the roadway.
Could answer your question?
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Kurski, do you have a picture of the plat with that red bridge? You showed, you showed a picture of houses. You showed a picture. There you go. Where is that red bridge on this picture?
It's actually, it was in the second edition. It's right over here.
If we could paint it red.
And it looked like it was close to one of the lots to me, unless that's an outlot.
That is, this is part of the reconstructed stream that's over here that the city did, and so this will not impact any of the lots. It's in the outlot.
Okay. Any other questions, staff? I'm assuming engineers built capacity, extra capacity into this. Very good. All right. Wishes of council? Mr. Lara?
I make a motion to approve Resolution R 2025-126 approving the final plat of Arbor Bluff Third Edition.
I'll second it.
We have a second by Counselor Contreras. Discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item that was removed from consent was 6J by Counselor Delaney. Mr. Delaney, floor is yours, sir.
Sure. Just had three quick questions. So there, there's no tax liability to the residents of the city. This is basically a pass-through.
Mayor and council, these, there's no tax liability, no bond liability, nothing to the city. These are restrict, these are strictly conduit debt. If you remember from the presentation, actually, the state has allocations, so for this project to move forward, we need this resolution so they can apply for that state allocation, which is actually a lottery, so we don't know whether they'll receive the funds or not.
There's two more questions. We've got, we've received a lot of emails on this. So basically, as this project rolls out, the builder will work with their neighbors, or the people living in the area on this project itself, communicate with them, and kind of go back and forth. This is not kind of set in stone now how it's going to build. There's still some development work to happen.
So mayor and council, if you remember, the developer who's here tonight pledged to meet with the neighbors. But as you remember from that discussion, this project is as of right. The only thing you'll see is the subdivision. But since we are acting as the conduit debt provider, we have some sway with addressing any other issues. But again, it's critical from a size standpoint, if you remember, I think it was 180 units, right? 180 units. They need that volume of units to make the bond of the project work.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I have a couple of my own. The first paragraph of the resolution, well, second paragraph, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Chapter 462(c), and as amended the Housing Acts, the city of, the city is authorized to carry out the public purpose described in the Housing Act providing for the issuance of revenue bonds and other obligations to provide funds. I couldn't find anywhere in here where there's no liability to the taxpayers of Shakopee. And I would feel much more comfortable if it was actually in here somewhere. And I also think the project, as I said when it was presented to us, that it was a little on the large side for my liking. It would be the largest in the City of Shakopee. And since that presentation, I did forward questions to staff that I have not had the opportunity to look over or receive. Maybe I received them and didn't have a chance to look at them. But one of my concerns was what they're going to be using for screening of their renters and what policies they're going to have in place that if they're, you know, causing trouble, that we're not spending millions of dollars on policing. So what are they going to have in place? It's a large, large place for one management company, depending on how I lay it out. So there's a lot of unanswered answers that I don't have, and I'm not comfortable at this point. So I'm not going to be supporting this until I have them answered. Mr. Whiting?
What's in front of us is a request for, let me see if I get the wording right, allocation of tax credits through the low-income housing credits through... So I don't see where that project is in front of us yet, so we can criticize that aspect of it. Right here in front of us is a request for, to move forward with the bond. So with that, I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution R 2025 Tac 129 and R 2025 Tac 130, which will allow Reuter Walton Development LLC to apply for low-income housing credits. The project is contingent upon receiving the allocation of tax credits in January 2026. If successful, the public hearing of the issuance bond and revenue bonds in benefit Reuter Walton Development LLC, its conduit debt, will be scheduled for 2026. And I would move it to its adoption.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Would anybody be opposed to adding the wording that the taxpayers will have zero liability in this project?
Because I would refer to our attorney if that would be something that could go in that.
I'm going to refer Mr. Whiting to the bond council on this, so I...
Oh, very good. Yes. Welcome.
Good afternoon, or evening.
Really close.
Sorry. The, the, obtaining the allocation is... There is a lot of people going out for that this year, right? Because they've lowered the requirement for how much you need to start with. You can go down to as low as 25% now instead of 50%. So that's twice as many people looking for allocation for housing, which is a good thing, right? Because we've got a lot of people who are not officially, you know, not, not, how do I say this? I'm sorry, it's been a long day. If they get allocation, what they need to do then is get additional, additional items, like a loan, or, you know, maybe a bank will come in and help put that together. There's a lot of different ways to do it. But, you know, it's very common that we're, that people are doing that, and it would not at all impinge on anything with respect to the city. The city will have no responsibility for any of it. It will have to be the developers who are here tonight. It will have to be the developers who are here tonight, and they will have to come up with the money. Once they get their allocation, then somebody will come and say, hey, I want some credits, so they will want to take some of that debt and pay for it as well.
Do you have a problem with us adding the wording that there'll be no liability to the taxpayers of Shakopee in this resolution?
There's, there, yeah, there is no.
You have no problem with that?
Correct.
Okay. That was the question.
Okay. So, yes.
So I'd like to amend, offer an amendment to the resolution adding that wording.
Now, I will say, though, if, if you, you know, there's a lot of cities that will provide, provide additional items like maybe an affordable housing trust fund, things like those, some cities will put money in. You do not need to do that if you do not want to.
We're not, I think we're at that point in this.
Right.
But if that wording can go in here, I would amend my motion for.
And the second, or?
That's fine.
Councilor Lara, you had a question?
When you mentioned earlier, you said that it was 25, now it's 50%, what are you referring to?
So when you go to get.
If you know that it's 25, yeah.
So when you go to get housing allocation, previously, you had to have at least 50% or 50, sometimes the bigger cities will say 53%. Now, we can go all the way down to 25% and then.
You're talking about funding, the funding for the project?
Correct. Mm-hmm. And then, if they get 25%, then they have to figure out the rest of it through getting loans from banks or, or whatever, but that is on the developer's side.
Is the, is the 25% from the state of Minnesota housing credit, housing tax credit?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
It is.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I will say that MMB, who handles allocation, has not decided whether they will go down to the 25% or if they'll stay at the 50%, but that's.
Lottery and a raffle.
Yeah. That's an issue for the developer.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Questions on the motion? We have a motion and a second that's been amended.
Staff okay with the language?
No issues here.
Okay, and when will we see this project come back? I suppose I got to see if they get the allocation from the state, right?
So if they get allocation, that would happen in the first week of January, and there's probably a large list, so it might be, they'd have to wait, you know, to the next year or the year after.
Okay.
Just depending on how things work out.
All right. To find out or to apply again?
To see if they get this year's state housing tax credits. If they don't, they can reapply for the following year. So until they figure out where that all lands, they really don't know what their project's going to be.
Right.
Sure.
Correct? Okay. All right, I think we're good.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions from council? All right, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Item number 99A is a proposed ordinance creating standards, rules, and regulations and licensing of towing companies. Mr. Kersky, floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. So this ordinance is a result of a number of complaints that the police department's received about various towing companies that are not currently under the city contract, that Shakopee Towing, operating in interesting ways of taking people's cars and holding their cars. So we worked with the city attorney and the chief and sergeant here to come up with a ordinance that would allow towing companies to be licensed. This is almost identical to an ordinance that was passed already in Savage because they had similar problems. So this would really regulate the towing companies within the city. If we have issues with them, they could appeal to the chief of police and then it would end up back with you if there are complaints against the company.
Okay, questions of staff? Mr. Whiting?
So let me just kind of clarify, so anytime the city or the, the police department, Shakopee Police Department, needs somebody towed, we call Shakopee Towing.
Correct.
Because that's who we've contracted with. But maybe other people are broke down on the side of the road and they picked up the phone and called, how does this work? How does people get involved?
Mayor and council, this pertains particularly to, many apartment complexes have rules about the cars that can be there. McDonald's has rules. I was just talking with the sergeant. The Shakopee Shopping Center has a towing company we didn't even know about that's out there towing cars. So one of the issues is you get out and your car is gone, you don't know where your car went. So they call the police department and they don't know where it went, so this ordinance really sets up.
Towed at owner's expense, kind of.
Yes, sets up a process, and sergeant would be happy to discuss some of the issues they've had.
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me point out, one of the issues from 45 years in the automotive industry that pops up, and certainly our, our police department can weigh in on this also, but there, there are some that will hook up a car that shouldn't really be hooked up, and when the owner comes out, they're like, hey, what are you doing? And they're like, it's already hooked up, I can drop it for a dropping fee when there shouldn't have been picked up to begin with. And now they're kind of in a position of stuck. Because if they want their car off the truck, they have to pay a drop fee when they shouldn't even had it picked up to begin with, and now they're calling the police and there's a confrontation between the owner of the vehicle, the towing company, and the police have to get involved in this. So what this basically does is sets the rules pretty straight across the board for all that operate in the city, so them types of things shouldn't happen, and if they do happen, it would be against our ordinance.
So they're holding cars hostage.
Yeah, that's exactly what they're doing.
Did you have something, Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, I, I'll just say that unfortunately predatory towing is the thing, and there are companies that, that will do exactly as the mayor described, they'll also tow and, and have an exorbitant price, they'll have a storage price, and the owner of the vehicle, you know, if they want their vehicle back, they have no other option but to pay essentially the extortion fee that these companies charge. We looked at this about two or three years ago, and we didn't have a problem back then. But it has become a problem, and that's why we're bringing it forward. It's already ready-made an impact in some of our other areas where those towing companies are now going to, not in the city of Shakopee, because they know now that we are in the process of putting this in place, and so some of our other neighbors will more than likely have to also adopt similar, unfortunately, similar ordinances to say, no, that's simply not allowed.
And it has zero impact on if you wanted to rent one of them car dollies from U-Haul and take your vehicle with you on a vacation, totally separate.
Correct, yeah. No, nothing like that.
Well, if you've ever parked on the wrong street when the snow flies in Minneapolis, that's like the same thing, it's the wild west of towing.
But they have a city impound lot where it's the same.
At least you know where to go.
It's for the same for all. The charges are the same regardless. Do we have any questions for staff or the PD? Take note of the presentation by the police department. It didn't even have to get questioned.
I don't know, we should get him up there for something, huh?
All right, what's wishes, council? Do we need to take an action on this or are we looking for input?
Looks like it's a motion.
The motion.
Okay, what's wishes, council? Mr. Lara?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance O2025-023, establishing a towing company licensing program and regulating consensual and non-consensual towing within the city of Shakopee.
Second.
You have a motion by Councilor Lara, seconded by Councilor Delaney, is there any discussion on the motion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is adopted. Liaison reports. Guess I'll start on this end. Mr. Delaney?
Okay, what's going on? Liaison reports, there was a, no 169, I'm sorry, 169 Coalition's looking at winding down activities early next year, so we're getting out, reaching out to all the members, I would need at least a two-third approval from the membership to pretty much cancel the joint powers agreement or dissolve the joint powers agreement and move forward from there. There will be a final meeting early next year where we're kind of look at the wins, have some speakers and go from there. There was no SPU meeting, there was a joint Jackson Township meeting. We also, again, apologize for not having them there for the Jackson Commons Park at that time, also, again. And I think a couple of things coming up this week. SMSC's fashion show, I think, is Friday, so definitely went to that last year, was a really fun, fun event, so definitely check that out.
Mr. Whiting, thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. You know, it's, it's the last day as November 21st, but MVTA is offering free rides through MVTA Connect, any food shelf. If the, the final destination is the food shelf, or if you're coming from the food shelf, free ride up to November 21st, so that's a great little aspect. And I do want to, we did have our MVTA board meeting, and there were some questions about some CEO pay, and we did come to find that there was some discrepancies in the salary compensation study. There has been adjustments made, I don't even know if we need to go any detail, but if you have any questions, I can show you. Unfortunately, it was a downward adjustment. And with our new, we did approve our budgets with the new funding for our non-funding of replacement buses, our future improvements and capital improvements and funding for replacing buses is looking a little sketchy at this time, but we're hoping for the best and have opportunities for some grants and things like that to make those things work.
How are we doing with the federal dollars bypassing the Met Council and going directly to the opt-outs? I know that's something that.
The federal, becoming a federal recipient, we're not there yet.
Okay, still working on it.
There's been a lot of gyrations through the Met Council and many positive things, but again, some things that are going to be trouble. You know, obviously, when the Met Council comes in and says, hey, we can run this bus route cheaper, remember, the Met Council doesn't own any buildings, and the Met Council doesn't own mechanics, it's all through Metro Transit, so it's not apples and apples comparisons. So MVTA does own mechanics, they do own buses, they do own transit stations and all that stuff, so it's, it's a completely different game. The Met Council, it just doesn't compare.
Right.
So if we end up opting and giving all of that transit dollars to the Met Council, which is a future goal of one of our representatives, we won't have service, basically.
Right. Or their service will be forced upon us.
Their service will be forced upon us at a very limited scale.
Right.
There's also some changes in some of the routes that the four fun bus is going to be now year-round, and that gets to some of our sites, and obviously during the winter, we're going to bypass the Valley Fair, that kind of thing, when they're not in service, but that route has been very successful. There's also a route that goes through Shakopee and right to the U of M now, so.
Can you share how happy we were with the results of the changes through the county with the Brent Fest and the traffic and the buses?
Absolutely. Yeah, they've done great work with that and some of their, one of our best events with the big blip on ridership this year was, of course, Taylor Swift, her last year. She can change the economy in any community she comes to, so hopefully we can get her into Shakopee, right?
All right. Anything else, sir?
That should do.
Councilor Contreras?
Thank you, mayor. So last week, I attended the ribbon cutting for Moonleaf, a new bonus takeover by Panera and South Bridge, and then on Friday, I was at the SCELLE meeting where there was a 2026 legislative SCELLE's priority update on what, you know, on the list that will be, that was all put together. And then also, the Prior Lake, Spring Lake watershed district gave an update, and, and after that, that was for SCELLE, and then after that, I did attend RTF meeting. It was just, I guess the main thing, and I did talk to Mr. Reynolds about this, and I will be passing that along if you guys need it, it was just an official, they're asking for everybody who's leaving if they could just have an official letter written, right, a written notice that we will no longer be participating. And then there was like the fee SCELLE, there's like a $25 upgrade now that, instead of being for like the whole day, now it's going to be like eight, every eight hours, for eight hours. So I'll pass that, that schedule for you guys to see a fee schedule.
For the RTF.
Yeah, for the RTF, yes.
But we already have an agreement that is still in place.
Well, that will be for next year.
Well, I think our agreement goes beyond next year. Mr. Reynolds?
2027.
Yeah.
The fees, I think, are for others, others using the facility.
Right, correct, correct.
Okay.
So, but I will give that to Mr. Reynolds so he could pass that. And then today, I attended the ribbon cutting for Hope Renew Thrift Store, which was a great, amazing, actually, turnout.
Very good.
That was me, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Lara?
The update I have is I attended the township, joint township meeting here on, it was like last Thursday, and then, yes, that's all I have at the current moment, sir.
All right. Since I missed the last meeting, I'm going to have to go back a little bit. October 22nd, Administrator Reynolds and I met with the MLC, Governor Walz was there, good discussion on housing. I did get a couple of questions in specifically about our concerns, this council's concern with housing issues, and we did get Governor Walz's commitment in front of the room, hopefully it was on camera, that if we could get both sides to put a bill on his desk to restructure the Met Council, he would absolutely sign it. So we need to be working on that because that's, also feeds into the housing issue. Scott County had an open house at Red Oak on the 21 Improvement, I attended, attended that. 24th, Lisa Free's retired from Scott County, she's a transportation asset, we go back a ways, worked on many projects with her, I was tied up with Family Matters and couldn't attend her retirement, I wanted to just put it out there how wonderful it was working with her and, sorry I couldn't make her retirement party, and I hope she has a great retirement. Surely going to miss all the time we spent together on many projects, so. 31st, October 31st, Walmart had its grand reopening, store remodel, Shakopee PD, Shakopee Fire, and I nominated SVA, Southern Valley Alliance, and it was accepted, all three received a grant from Walmart, a community grant, I can't remember the dollar amount, 1,500, 1,200, something like that. So that was pretty awesome. The store looks fabulous with the remodel. We have, I have had discussions with the new store manager out there, he's got a great vision of, of making a really good asset for Shakopee, which it already is, but as far as, you know, various issues that pop up, he's working on them, so that's good to hear. November 4th, school referendum, both ballot questions did pass by the voters, and I also attended today the ribbon cutting at Hope Renew with Councilor Contreras. I got to tell you, the, was it the Bloomington?
Jazz.
Bloomington.
The jazz band?
Private school ja, band was just awesome. I mean, abs, for as young as they were, they were just awesome. Little deep purple smoke on the water, and it was, they, they were great for their age, it was, it was amazing. Really good people there, their vision is awesome, their, their help, it's a nonprofit with faith-based communities, kind of like Heartland does here, and, you know, receiving used goods, reselling them at discount prices like a, like a thrift store, and so it's, it's helping others, and it's helping them help others. Some of the proceeds are going to some of these special things like the jazz bands and things like that, so just a win-win-win all the way around, great people, a great turnout, it's going to be a great asset to our community, I'm sure my wife's probably going to need a room down there, she'll come in with four boxes and come home with five, and you know, that's how it works sometimes. Mr. Reynolds, do you have any administration report?
Nothing for me, sir.
All right. Item 10A?
Can I ask a clarifying question? So when you were at that meeting with the governor, was one of your questions regarding the zoning issues?
Well, there was a huge conversation on housing specifics from all the different mayors, administrators, and other staff members that were there, and, you know, there's questions surrounding the zoning issues that the state was talking about in their legislative pushes for, do we allow commercial next? about in their legislative pushes for, do we allow commercial next to residential? Do we allow a sixplex in a single-family residential? You know, how do you, the real issue that I think there's a lot of agreement on from all the cities, member cities of the MLC, is that there are no two cities that are the same. And when you try to put a blanket down like that, you know, it may work in one community, and maybe they like that, but it doesn't work in many others. And, and I think the best people, at least what I hear from this council and what I represented, was that the best place for that decision-making to happen is, is here at local control, where we answer up to our citizens and we decide, you know, where we want industrial, where we want commercial, where we want residential. And that's really what the, the basis of the Met Council originally was under the Minnesota Land Planning Act, which I did bring up with, with Governor Walz, and get it returned back to the, the foundation of what it was designed to do and what it was legislatively made to do, which was not to tell us at the local level how to do, build our community, but rather, the Met Council is supposed to take our planning efforts through our elected leaders and our staff, and Met Council should be taking that information for future capacity needs, not only in roadways, but in sewers and stormwater runoff and these types of things. So they have exceeded their legislative charge at this point, in my opinion. And we need to get them back to, to doing what they should be doing. And to be honest with you, if you really think about what they've done over the years where they tell us what our densities are going to be, or they tell all of us what our density is going to be, they always increase it, and what they are doing to themselves is making their future capacity needs greater, and they can't tell you today if they can meet that future capacity need tomorrow already. So they need to step back and get back to their original, get back to their original legislative intent of, under the Land Planning Act, and really absorb and oversee where what we're doing, you know, if we have an issue on the border of Savage where we want to do one thing, they want to do another thing, and neither Shakopee nor Savage notices that incompatible land use side by side on our border, their job is to point that out and say, are you both good with this? Because we think it might be a problem having a great big giant dirty industrial next to these high-end homes, okay? And sometimes, you know, things go through the cracks, and their job is to try to, to catch them and make sure that what we're doing in Savage example are doing, are intentional. And build in that capacity based on everybody's plans. So that's what I represented, and I thought it went very well. And if we can get our legislators to, you know, work on it some more, they worked on it last session, it was close, we almost got there, a lot of other things popped up and muddied the waters, so hopefully we can continue down that path and get that straight about.
I agree.
All right. City bill list?
No questions.
News and announcements?
You got two.
I'll take one.
Mr. Lara?
Winter parking restrictions are now in effect and run until April 1st. No parking is allowed from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM on city streets. Certain exceptions apply within the calendar zone. Please visit shakopee MN.gov/winterparking for more information.
Mr. Whiting, you want a second one?
Did you want that one?
Tired.
I would have done the winter parking restrictions with a little more authority.
Out of there, boo.
Hey, it's the Holiday Fest for 2025. Holiday Fest is Saturday, December 6th, 2025, from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM in downtown Shakopee, of course. Holiday Fest is a celebration to kick off our holiday season. There will be a winter vendor marketplace, pictures with Santa, he's coming down for this event, a tree lighting and fireworks, so come join in on the holiday fun. More information can be found at Shakopee Chamber of Commerce website.
You know who lights the tree, right?
There's fireworks. Oh, who's that?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
And-
And fireworks.
Rumor has it, they're trimming that tree as we speak.
It's up. No, it's up. Oh, they're trimming it, yes, yes.
Yep. Not cutting it, but putting the lights and stuff on.
Shakopee Public Utilities, they usually come help us with that, so thank you for that.
Absolutely. All right, other business. I just have one, if, staff, if you want to put together an update on a joint township meetings that I missed, I would appreciate that. And if anything that councilors had, you had something, Regional Training, Training Center, if you want to share that out with us, that'd be great, too. That's all I have. Anybody else? Okay. Wishes of council?
I make a motion, we adjourn till December 2nd, 2025.
Your second? Second by Counselor Contreras. Discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we are adjourned.